Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for January 7th or 2nd, 2018. Welcome. If we could please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Luce?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Moko?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hoping everybody had a happy holiday and a happy new year. Moving ahead to approval of the agenda. Any changes, corrections, deletions? Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Lehman?
Go through the agenda?
Second. I have a motion, a second by Councilor Luce. Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Item number four, consent agenda. Are there any changes, additions? Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Councilor Moko?
I would offer moving 9B1 to consent.
9B1 to consent?
Yes.
Are we gonna see a presentation on that? Oh, 9B1, I apologize.
Yeah, that's just the...
Okay. Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
I have a motion for a modified consent and a second by Councilor Lehman. Before we vote, we will read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and happy new year to everybody. These are the consent agenda items for January 2nd of 2018. 4A1 approves a five-year website agreement with Vision Technology Solutions. 4A2 approves the minutes of the December 19th to 17th, 2017 meeting, excuse me. 4A3 designates the Shakopee Valley News as the official newspaper for the City of Shakopee in 2018 and designates the city website as the official notice and advertisement venue for transportation project bids in 2018. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-003, which approves the revised final plat of Ridge Creek 2nd Edition. 4C1 approves the renewal of the school resource officer agreement with the Shakopee School District. 4D1 approves the purchase of four Skid steer loaders from Lano Equipment and Ziegler Rental in an amount not to exceed $16,295. 4D2 approves the purchase of two 10-foot snow plows from Truck Utilities Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $23,200. 4D3 approves the purchase of two 2018 Ford Utility Police Interceptor AWD vehicles utilizing the state contract from Hibbing Ford in an amount not to exceed $57,860.90. 4D4 approves the purchase of a Toro Groundmaster Large Area Rotary mower from MTI in an amount not to exceed $108,846. 4D5 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-001, which accepts concrete pavement improvements at Fire Station Number 1, Project Number 2017-TAC-5. And finally, 9B1 sets the public hearing date for TAC increment finance district for Canterbury Park for March 6th of 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. I have a motion, a second. There is no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead now, I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome just in time. Come to the podium. Welcome. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Hi, my name is Mary Isaacson. I live at 703 Lewis Street, Shakopee, Minnesota. I own Babe's Place Downtown in Shakopee. And I was running on... I just would like to put it out there, the property, the old City Hall property, that I know you have a bunch of, or you set it out to have investors, and that the plan is, and you know, that stuff. I was wondering, can we leave it a parking lot? I'm asking for a parking lot, and I'm not just asking for myself. I've heard countless of times that there's parking everywhere in Shakopee. There's a parking lot on Lewis Street. There's a parking lot by Pablo's. There's a parking lot on Fuller Street. There's nothing on Home Street, except our on-the-road parking. And Home Street is, has many businesses on that street. I just can only speak for myself. You know, I have my clientele, my customers. The closest parking lot to me would probably be Fuller Street or Pablo's. Great, Pablo's does an outstanding business, and the parking lot fills up. So, I mean, I've been to Pablo, and I know you all have. So, there is no parking there. Fuller Street, you know, then you say walk down the dark alley. You know, and I get it, this year I think we're slated to get concrete in there, but still a very dangerous proposal to have people walk down the alley when the alley is used for driving. But there is, there is no parking. Home Street does not have any parking. And yeah, I'm running a business where, you know, during the daytime, it's fine. At nighttime, weekends, there, and I'm watching people, and granted, the parking lot just got done, but I'm still watching people that they'll, they'll park on Home Street, and they walk, and they go around the corner, and they go down to, you know, so I mean, so that's telling me there's not enough parking over there either. So, I just was, would like you to keep in mind, when you're going through everything, that people are bringing, you know, all your bids and stuff, that what's gonna go there and where are they gonna park? I mean, it's been brought to mind, you know, they want a restaurant down there. Where are the people gonna park if it's a restaurant? Or where are the people gonna park if it's gonna be an apartment? Or where are the people gonna park if it's gonna be a business? Where are they gonna park? And then to have them have to walk a block or two when it's 17 below is a little unreasonable. We're dealing with old-town Shakopee. You know, this isn't a new development or anything. We have to work around what's been there for 100 years. And so, that's why I'm just, I'm still going with, there is no parking. And I get it, you know, you can go drive around and round, but so that's, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to say is, think everything through first, and make sure you ask yourself, where are these people gonna park if it is, like I said, a restaurant, or whatever you have going on in there? And I, and then otherwise, I would, I would vote for a parking lot, maybe put a park bench in there, you know, make it pretty. I, you know, I don't care. But have something that you're thinking the whole thing through instead of, yep, that's what we need, but again, where are they gonna park? So, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Okay. Councilor Luce?
I just have a question on when frat loans might be moving their equipment out of the old parking lot. That would give them some spaces, you know, if they could move the fencing in if they're done with whatever they're doing until spring.
The project isn't done yet. As soon as the project is done, we'll continue to have the site itself fenced off, but the old parking lot will be open then, once that's completed.
Any ETA on when that might happen?
Michael, are we still looking at mid-January? Although I can tell by your smile that it's gonna get pushed back because of our latest issue.
Michael?
Mayor, members of council, they've been pushed back because of the cold weather right now. They cannot get compaction, and there's also, they found asbestos in the footings in the building. So, there's two piles of debris that are currently covered with tarps, and they're waiting for clearance so that they can remove that material to an appropriate landfill. If it can warm up a little bit, it looks like it might hit the 20s this weekend, they will start back up. They're gonna try and do some site cleanup on Thursday if it's not below zero, but they have certain requirements they have to meet, and they had not expected it to be this cold.
Thank you. Councilor Whiting?
I don't think any of us expected it to be that cold, but my point is, you know, we've had the parking discussion before, and I think when we get the requests for proposals back, I think adding that to the conversation at that time, since we really can't address it tonight, I think that would be appropriate to have, have that as one of the topics of concern when we're dealing with the proposals.
Mr. Reynolds?
You know, since I've been here, parking has been a topic of conversation. I would suggest that we actually invest in a parking study for downtown. And, and then, you know, that gives us something, some articulable facts as opposed to just speculation about what's actually occurring and what parking is available.
Take, take stock of what we have?
Yes, sir.
And analyze the needs, and then Councilor Whiting?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea, and I would move to direct staff to bring us back proposals on what a parking study might cost and who we could have that done with.
Consensus on that, Councilor Lehman?
There's been at least two that I recall, parking studies of downtown since I've been here. So, we might wanna look at them studies also and see what's changed since then. Incorporate, incorporate that into the new study?
Yes, sir. Is that a second?
Is that something we can do in-house?
I, I don't know, but why don't we do this? Why don't we take a look at those two studies, bring those back as a refresher for those of us that haven't been here and don't know about them? And then, depending on, upon your level of comfort, then at that point, we can determine where to go from there.
Try to find a way forward.
Yes, sir.
Is that acceptable with all members?
Yeah, I think that's the way to go.
Enough traction? Thank you. Thank you very much. Would any other citizen like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Happy holidays.
Mr. Mayor, council people, my name is Sam Smith. I'm a student at Shakopee High School, a senior. One thing I noticed is that Shakopee just got a new, I think it's a statue of Chief Shakopee when you come into Shakopee on 101. Just a suggestion for lighting of that statue. I don't know if that's been brought up, but at night, when you come in, all you can read is Shakopee, and then the statue is not visible. I don't know if that's been addressed or not, but just something I thought could be brought up to all of you. Thank you.
It's been brought up a lot.
Including by my wife to me on a couple occasions. The project isn't finished yet. We're waiting on the weather to warm up a little bit. There's some more lighting that has to go, that'll go down by the Christmas tree as well. You'll see some poles that are sitting there on the ground currently and some orange cones. So, once that occurs, we'll have all that hooked up, and, and there will be lights that shine up on Shakopee then as well. But yes, my, my wife has been very vocal about that very same thing, so.
You're not alone. If there is no other residents who would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda, we would move forward then. There's no items removed from consent tonight. Then we would recess for the EDA meeting. Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to recess to the EDA meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we are in recess for the EDA.
So, we'll call a Shakopee EDA authority for January 2nd, 2018 to order, and the secretary will note the roll, please. You all should have an agenda in front of you. Question I had for staff is, on this agenda, it has one item on consent. Who's our staff first for tonight?
The minutes?
Mr. Kerski?
Yes.
The only thing on the, on the consent is the minutes for tonight?
Correct.
Correct.
There's gonna be discussion on the bill list? All right. Direction, Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mars, seconded by Mr. Luce. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Consent agenda, Mr. Whiting?
I'd move to put the EDA bill list, number, item 5A, on the consent business and make a motion to adopt the EDA minutes and the EDA bill list.
Second.
Second by Ms. Moko. Any discussion? Are we all okay with having the bills on the consent? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda as modified, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February 6th, 2018 at 7:00.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Whiting, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes, 5-0. And a new record is set.
We will reconvene this City Shakopee City Council Meeting for January 2nd, 2018. After the EDA meeting, lengthy discussion, we will move on to 9A1, purchasing process review. Mr. Reynolds?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nelson is going to go and turn on the video for me in a few minutes, but probably, I believe it was in late November, Councilor Lehman had asked some questions in regards to his discussions with the public and some current concerns in regards to our purchasing policy and just, you know, how can the public be sure that we're not spending the money on things we shouldn't be spending it on? And so, what we wanted to do is to kind of walk through with you in a video that we're gonna show here, which is full of Oscar-nominated performances, which, which essentially will walk through what a typical purchase goes through, and then once this is done, we'll come back and, and answer any questions, but then I'm gonna talk specifically about a few points that I think are, it's important to reinforce. With that being said, Mr. Nelson?
Hi, everyone. Bill Reynolds, here, your city administrator. We wanted to take some time today to walk you through our payment processing system. Darren, what is our system, and when did we first establish it? And why?
Well, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We established our, we implemented a tungsten workflow process this past summer, back in July of 2017, we went live. And part of that process was is that it's a, it's an automated process that actually we integrate our purchasing policy right into our purchasing procedures, basically. And so, as we were going through implementing that tungsten workflow process, we took the time as well to look at our purchasing policy that hadn't been reviewed in a number of years, made some updates to that, and made some, some good changes to make sure that we have solid internal controls in place, and that we could better actually implement those internal controls right into the tungsten workflow process.
And this particular process gives your department, as the finance director, multiple eyes on this particular, any one particular receipt or document, correct?
Well, absolutely. As, as our purchasing policy lays out, dependent upon the dollar value of the invoice, we will have upwards of, at least two people will touch it, and actually, three people will touch it by the time it reroutes back into finance, but upwards of four or five people by the time everything is said and done on an invoice, so.
One of the interesting things that you touched on was the fact that we have melded our, our purchasing policy with our actual purchasing system, and that what we've done is integrate that to where our policy really is the process and vice versa. How important is that?
It's, it's very important. You can always have a policy, but if you don't follow the policy, it's as good as the words that are written on a piece of paper. So, having that policy in place ensures a strong internal controls, but better, but foremost is actually implementing those internal controls. And that's what this tungsten system has allowed us to do, is that we're actually able to program in the controls of that policy that ensures that every time the invoice comes through, it's following the exact process that has been set up in place, so that we have consistency among employees, and they know exactly what is required to process up the invoice through the system.
So, what we're gonna do now is walk you through an invoice as it comes through the process. Hello, everyone. We're starting at the beginning of our process for the tungsten system, and Darren is gonna help us explain exactly what it is we're seeing. This is the first set of eyes that we have on this particular invoice. Darren?
Thank you. To begin our tungsten workflow process, we receive all of our invoices, all the original invoices into our finance department. That's part of the control process that ensures that we've received the original invoice either via mail or email from the vendor up here at the finance department. And we are with Karen McNamara, our accounts payable clerk, that handles the initial kickoff of our tungsten workflow process. She's responsible for gathering all those invoices, and then entering them into the system, and ensuring that a lot of our other information in there is correct. Karen can go into the details specifically of what she does on her end.
Sure, thank you, Darren. What we do is called validation. When an invoice is either mailed in or emailed into the city, I have the responsibility of going through, adding the vendor name, the invoice number, the invoice date, the dollar amount, and from that point, double-checking to make sure that everything is okay on it, no sales tax, and everything else looks fine. From that point, I need to then make the determination as to who I will route it to, to do the geo-coding part of the process. Once the geo-coding part is finished, I approve it so that it goes on to that person, and then it goes into their inbox in their geo-coding approval.
We are now gonna start working through our tungsten approval workflow process. We are in Andy Hudson's office, really, our IT manager, and he's gonna work through one of the approvals for one of our Logis invoices for our server upgrades that we've recently implemented this past, this past fall and winter here now. So, off to Andy for working through that approval process.
Okay, so I've received a notification in my email that I do have a tungsten workflow item, and it happens to be for a server SAN project that was approved back in October. So, what I need to do is log into tungsten. And I can see within tungsten that I do have several invoices. I do have four invoices. And I can see that I do have one from Logis, which is the one that we're gonna show you today. So, I can open up and view the invoice that came in through the finance department, and I can see in this one that I do have multiple items. Not only do I have the project for the server SAN replacement, but I also have some licensing that I also need to pay. So, I need to pay two separate charges on that and apply that to two separate GL codes. So, what I can do is I select my line item that I wanna work on, but I do also need to attach the approval to that for, for the project, which was approved by the city council again back in October. So, what I do there is I click on the PID number, and I need to add. So, I click Add, Add a new document. And on my desktop, I do have a Logis council memo. So, I pulled that from the council memo, which I gave to city council, and I attached that, and I add that as council approval, and insert that into my line item.
And maybe we should take a step back, Andy, and talk about why we're attaching the council approval to this item. This was a larger project that was over that $25,000 purchasing threshold for, which is one of the thresholds within our purchasing policy. Anything above that purchasing threshold of $25,000 needs to have council approval beforehand. So, that's just ensuring that when we go through and approve this document that, or this invoice that we have received that council approval on the front end.
That is correct. So, now you can see I have not only the invoice in there, but I also have the council-approved memo attached to my purchase. So, now I can actually geo-code that. So, if I click on geo-code, so now I can see on my screen here that I'm looking at an account number that it just defaults to 999. So, I have to pick my IT fund where this purchase came out of. You can see that this is the first invoice for a project of $96,000. Total project was over, is going to be over $200,000. So, this is just the first invoice that came in from Logis. So, my first one I punch in is for the project, so that's 9578066740. And it's actually not for the full dollar amount, because I showed before that I do have some separate charges on there for some licensing. So, this one comes up to 93998 and 82 cents. And explanation is a server SAN replacement project. And this is a limited character field, so I can't put a long. So now you can see I have a remaining balance of $2,234, and that is the exact dollar amount that I have left for my Adobe licensing for next year. So I have to change my code to sixty-four ten, add that, and now I can see my invoice is balanced at zero. So all my items that I have within this project are within that area right there.
So the tungsten workflow system is built with controls in place that says that invoice total, it knows what the total invoice is, and it has to distribute that entire invoice amount out to different areas. So if Andy would have stopped after the first step, it would have aired out and not allowed him to go any further beyond this point.
Okay, so now I can hit save and next. And you can see on my screen, the distributed amount equals my invoice amount, and I can go ahead and hit done.
And you notice there that no errors popped up when Andy hit done. With an invoice that large, that was $96,000 invoice or so, there are controls built into the system that says, okay, if it's above $25,000, something else needs to happen because we need to have that council approval. Well, Andy's first step was to, was to attach that council approval memo. Well, if he wouldn't have done that, the system would have stopped him at that point and said, hey, we have an error, something's not attached because something isn't, isn't lining up with what the parameters have been designed or implemented into the system, which all goes back to what our purchasing policy is as well. So the system's designed to mirror what our purchasing policy is. So at this point, Andy is done with his coding process, and now we'll move on to his supervisor, which would be Nate Burkett, our Assistant City Administrator. Welcome back. We are now with Nate Burkett, the Assistant City Administrator, and working with our second step in the approval process of that first invoice that we're looking at with the Logis invoice from Andy Hudson, our IT manager. Nate will now sign into our system and look at the, and review the invoice and make sure that all the supporting documentation is attached, and make sure that we have budget allotment for it, make sure that everything looks accordingly to his satisfactory as well, too. So, welcome, Nate.
Thanks, Darren. I'm going to log into tungsten with my unique password. I'm going to go into the workflow, and as you can see on the left side here, I have an invoice for approval from Andy Hudson and the amount of $96,232 for Logis. And what I do is I'll typically click on the link to take a look at the invoice, make sure I feel as though it's appropriate. And because it is over $25,000, I'm going to look to this tab up here for council approval. I'm going to see that it's approved by council. Approve and done.
And the nice thing about our tungsten workflow process is that it, it has an audit trail for every step in the process, from when it was kicked off within the Finance Department to now Andy Hudson and now on to Nate Burkett. And since this is a larger invoice over that $25,000 threshold, it is actually going to go on to our City Administrator for his approval as well. That's another piece of our purchasing policy that we have implemented within the tungsten workflow system. So through all those steps, all that audit trail is always being documented, and we can tell exactly when it arrived, when it was approved, and when it left Nate's, Nate's desk to go on to the next step for the approval process or on to Finance for Finance Review.
Hello, everyone. Bill Reynolds, City Administrator, again. It's now my turn to have my fingers on this particular product. Just to recap, at this point, we've had Andy Hudson do the coding, we've had Nate Burkett do the initial approval, and now I will be doing the final approval because this item is over $25,000 and per a policy and per the tungsten process that requires my fingers on it as well and my approval. So with that being said, we've already logged in, and I'm going to go directly to the item in question. I'm going to take a look at this particular piece. It's City Manager approval. As you can see here, we've got the item. The first thing I'm going to do is to take a look, much like Nate did. I'm going to take a look at the actual documentation to once again have another set of eyes on this. Darren, at this point, this particular invoice has had, including your Finance Department has had how many sets of eyes on it?
It would have had the initial Finance would have sent out the invoice originally, would have went to Andy Hudson as the initial GL coder, Nate Burkett as the direct supervisor of that, and then on to the City Administrator, so it would have had at least four touches to this point.
At this point, so I'm the fourth touch to this. I'm going to look through this, like I said, doing much the same thing that Nate has done. For me, I specifically look at this particular item here on each one of these documents because these are the, the voucher audited for payment. That means that gives me some comfort level that these have all been touched and looked at. And everything appears to be in order. I would spend more time on this, frankly, if it wasn't, if we weren't looking at time for this particular video. I'm looking at the invoice amount, which did also reflect the previous amount. And I just want to check one more thing, the council approval. This is the memo that Andy had originally written to the council on October seventeenth. I'm reviewing that, making sure that once again, that everything is order in order there. I'm comfortable at this point that this is good. I'm going to hit select and approve. And this is, other than Finance, the final piece of this particular item. And at this point, it'll go into the Finance final approval authority.
We are now back with Karen, who we started the process with. We've kind of made full circle of that invoice, of those invoices coming through the approval process. Karen now will review the invoices and do a final check to verify that everything is accurate and that there isn't any other issues with the invoice and that all appropriate documentation is attached. And Karen, you can explain that process a little better than I can.
Sure, Darren. Once everything has been approved, and it has been through the system, it comes into the Finance Review box. At that time, that is the last option before it goes on to our JDE system, which then will generate the checks. We go through that process by me opening up each individual review. I look to make sure that we have the appropriate attachments to it, the names and everything else are still valid, the dollar amounts and all of the paperwork line up to everything that attaches to that invoice. Once that is done, it then goes off into our JDE system for it then to be processed as a payment.
So guys, help me understand what the difference is between this type of a purchase, which is a large, major purchase that has went through the process and is approved by council, and let's say a purchase card, our city credit cards. What's the difference?
Well, the main difference is, is that it's a different type of transaction. A P card, we have the system set up to recognize that it's a P card. It requires the documentation, the detailed receipt of that transaction to be attached to it, similar to how we attach the council memo, but it's going to identify itself as a P card transaction. We get a statement at the end of each month from our credit card company listing all those transactions. Karen then takes that, that credit card statement and it magically goes out to every P card holder, and then, then they are responsible for attaching their P card receipt that they have, that they receive from the store or online or whatnot on that end of it. But really, the process mirrors our purchasing policies, that the process is pretty much the same, it just identifies this as a, as a P card transaction versus a regular invoice.
Karen, what happens if, if we don't have an invoice, a documentation? What's your role at that point?
If some attachment is not the correct one, I have the option to reject it and send it back to that person with a note that is documented on there for them to see, saying that this is the wrong backup or more backup is required in order for this to be approved.
And you will not approve anything absent that backup?
Correct.
Right. And the nice thing about our system, as we mentioned earlier, is that it has that audit tracking feature on there, so we can see every one of those steps. So if Karen rejects it, we'll know exactly the time and date that it was rejected, who it went back to, and when they then corrected their, the issues and came back to Finance Review.
And that's our process, ladies and gentlemen. Both Darren and I take our jobs very seriously. We want to make sure that we are good stewards of your tax dollars. I've often said that, you know, as, since we take your money in a transaction, it's not a voluntary transaction, we have a higher moral responsibility to make sure that we use those funds wisely and that we also are accountable for the use of those funds. Darren, we've walked them through the system at this point. When you think about our particular system and some of the, you know, we've both been in different venues in the past, different organizations, what's your level of comfort with what we currently have in place?
So my level of comfort with our system is, is a lot different than with other organizations I've been with. Having implemented this tungsten workflow process, it really has incorporated, there's no more of that, obviously, there's always a human factor to it, but it's taken out some of that decision-making processes that we always have to have the appropriate approval levels done for, depending upon the amount of the invoice and such like that. So it really has strengthened those internal controls. As a Finance Director, we're always looking to improve upon internal controls and I was kind of taking a watchful look at things, but as far as our systems are concerned, I have great comfort in knowing that we have good procedures and process in place.
And I'll tell you, as a City Administrator, I have a great comfort as well. If for no other reason is that we have multiple sets of eyes, as we've shown you, that look at the same document and have to basically sign off on everything that comes through. It's not just one, it's not just two, sometimes it's not even just three, it's four or five different people depending on that level of a particular invoice. So thank you very much for your time and attention, and we look forward to serving you in the future.
So that's just a brief walkthrough of what we do with each document, each receipt, each bill that comes through the process in order for us to pay it. The important piece, I think, to, there are two, two things I want to stress again. One is that our policy is actually the process. The policy that this body approved is the process, and that's exactly what we walk through. And you can see the approval authorities in the memo that was sent out. The other piece, and I want to read this specifically because this is really the most important piece. This purchasing process is the same, no matter if an employee is purchasing from a local or national vendor, or if the purchase is made through a store account or through a purchasing card. The consistency of the process is what ensures a sound internal control system. The other piece is, it doesn't matter who is purchasing, whether it's a mechanic at the shop or whether it's the City Administrator. All has to go through the same process. My, my particular processes are approved, it's either by Darren or Nate, depending on the situation. So, and again, it starts with Karen, who first coded, or who first puts it in for it to be coded. So, you know, Darren and I and everyone else is more than happy to answer any questions. We hope that this is bringing a little more insight into, to how we approve bills at the city and, you know, if there are people that have more questions or if they'd like to know more about it, we'd be more than happy to walk them through that at some point as well in the future at any time.
Great presentation. Questions? Comments? Councilor Lehman?
First question is, does the system that we were showing have a backup to it so as information is put in, that that information is captured and backed up in case the system would go down and collapse or get wiped out or something?
Yes, sir. Everything that we have is on a backup here at the city.
Okay. And then the second question, specifically about the PL one level purchases, the three and four level purchases that go through council, really, we're looking up here at the total dollar amount to a project.
Yep.
Through the process. On PL two, it's, it's got City Administrator directly involved in oversight along with the person that's coding it and the department, I would assume, although it doesn't really say that. It says the authorized purchaser, is that the, the department that purchases something?
It actually depends. So an authorized purchaser could be, for example, let's say a mechanic has a part that they need and is, you know, and they have the ability to run out and grab that particular part. So they are an authorized purchaser because they have been given that authority by their department head. And then their, then, you know, it could be in a situation like that where their immediate supervisor, then their department head also approved.
So under PL one, under 5,000, water pump, a mechanic is getting a water pump for a car or something. They buy the part, $100 part, they turn that paperwork then into their supervisor.
They actually turn it into the Finance Department.
Okay, that's the, Gallup was on the video that's entering this then?
Correct.
Okay, and then from there, where does it go in that particular case?
Then it's coded into the system at that point and scanned into the system, and then Karen will then send it to, at that point, who would it go to?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, it would actually go back to that person that purchased that part. Because that person then is verifying that the invoice matches what product or service they received for that. So then they'll be responsible for, for coding that invoice, GL coding that, general ledger coding, and then from there it would go on to their immediate supervisor. It could be their department director or it could be a supervisor within that, that department as well.
Okay. And then from that supervisor, it's in the same system, they look through it, they say it's okay. I would assume that water pump would be assigned to a vehicle in the fleet process.
Right, that's a different system, but yeah, within their fleet system, they would assign it to that vehicle so it gets costed out.
Okay.
Through the costing system as well.
And then the department person signs off on it and it's, goes back to the first lady and.
Yep.
And Finance. Okay. My, my concern was precisely what happened at the school district with the P card usage. Okay? So here we had P cards at the school, school district being used for other than legitimate purposes by individuals that everybody had confidence in through multiple layers. And I'm trying to figure out, how do we, how do we do two things? How do, A, do we ensure that that doesn't happen at this level? And second, how do we give the public confidence that this body is overseeing that? Because to me, it seems like the general public made it pretty clear that in their eyes, the school board is ultimately responsible for what happened at the school district. Kind of hard to argue with that, but from my standpoint with this body, it's like, okay, the, specifically the PL one, I think, would be the issue.
Sure.
How do we, how do we, how do we achieve them two things?
I think it's important to recognize that there are multiple eyes on even a PL one purchase outside of the department. Finance starts the process. It then goes to the department. So essentially, for, you know, and I don't know anything about how the school district did their internal, I can, I can only say that, that I have a lot of confidence that, that it, it, even at the beginning, it starts in Finance. So if, 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 if the individual who ultimately is responsible for the process as a whole, who is Karen Macklin, you know, if she sees that there's something wrong or if she has some questions, she's going to, to start a process to try to resolve that. And it's all done through the system. As Darren said in the video, everything is kept, everything, every note is actually in, so let's say she's, let's, you know, she's rejected a, a particular item because this isn't the correct receipt or you don't have the receipt, and that goes through. Any one of us can get on the system and take a look and say, okay, this, this apparently, this is outstanding because they're waiting for a receipt or it was the wrong item or whatever. So you've got, you've got the Finance Department, you've got the, the individual who ultimately is responsible for coding it, their supervisor is going to review it, and then possibly even their supervisor depending. So let's, I guess, let's just talk about the elephant in the room. If there's a fraudulent situation, you've got four people in multiple departments and multiple levels that, that would have to sign off on the fraud. And, and, you know, that's why I thought it was so important to kind of walk people through to show them how this particular system works. We've taken out the ability, for example, of Bill Reynolds to say, oh, here, you know, just, just sign off on this and, and then we'll put it in the system. I don't have that authority. No one has that authority. It has to go through the policy, which is our process at this point. And so it's taken away, as Darren also mentioned in the video, it's taken away some of that human dynamic. It would not get entered into the process to begin with if I, if I tried to do that. Councilor?
I'll use the same example on the PL one, and you're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you how easy this is to, to do it wrong, and you're going to tell me how wrong I am, okay? Hopefully. Mechanic buys a wrench. Okay? Turns it into Macklin. Macklin says, yep, it's tool, it's wrench. Sends it back. Mechanic that bought the wrench now says, yep, I bought that wrench. Okay? Goes to the director, and the director says, yep, mechanic probably needs a wrench. Signs off on it. Mechanic now has a wrench to take home.
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
And now the mechanic takes his wrench home.
Well, there's other internal controls that we have for, for city property. Well, there's other internal controls that we have for, for city property. This is specifically talking about the, the purchasing process.
And I, I want to back up. I'm not implying that any of our mechanics are bad people and stealing or anything like that. It was strictly an example. So don't, don't take it out of context.
Yeah, and I think it's important to recognize that, that if, you know, that's something, that's, that's theft, that isn't purchasing fraud. That's, that's theft. And, and, and in such a situation, you know, can I say that we would find out about that immediately? You know, immediately, no. I can't say that.
And this is why I asked specifically if like water pump or parts, car parts, because it's just a field I'm comfortable with, are in the fleet system assigned to each vehicle, which I'm sure they, they are. I'm almost positive they are.
And actually have to be coded to the account of the department that that's going to.
Right, and because sometimes you get warranty and stuff like this. But are, are equipment, small equipment purchases like tools and these types of things, are they also inventoried in? And then followed through, you know, if you're buying 15 of one specialty something, it's like, where did the other 14 go? You know, so that's an internal control issue.
Yeah, and, and, and we can, and we can talk about that, and, and, and kind of maybe show some of the internal control procedures in the future, if you'd like to do that. We did not focus on that for this particular.
Purchasing versus inventory control.
Okay.
I think in the, from what I know about the school board, I don't, I don't think they employ a technology like the city does. Also, I think, I look at this and go, several people have to sign off, even at the smallest level. What I have read is that the school board, there was only really one sign-off person. And, and that may have been a conflict of interest or a, a measure of authority over that. But I look at this and, you know, on the big purchase, I counted, you know, one, two, three, four, you know, actually five people, counting the clerk twice. The P-card, in your situation, Counselor Lehman, about, I have to get and sign off and put my name on that receipt. And then it has to go to the department head, but at the end of the day, hey, here's that invoice, here, we've checked that off. You signed your name to it, that, where is it, right? You can, you can take and tie that employee directly to that product purchase.
Yep.
I know that in the, in the school district, you know, that, I don't know if there was even a direct tie on some of those purchases. They, they found some of those products, but I'm impressed with what I saw.
No, thank you for the presentation, and everybody should take a bow for their wonderful performance and everything. But I wanted to get back to one thing, and it kind of goes with what we're talking about here with the authority. And you had mentioned, as the city administrator, in your P-card purchases, you also have some approvals done through Darren or?
Yeah, absolutely. It, it, all of us go through the same process. So it starts with Karen, and let's say, I don't know, I, I needed office supplies or something, which is a bad example because I wouldn't be the one purchasing. Let's say there was nobody around and I couldn't find something, I needed some office supplies. So I, I spent $20 on some office supplies. That P-card transaction will then go to, I don't know, it doesn't go directly to Karen, does it? Karen takes it, but she ultimately puts it in the system, and then sends it to me and says, you know, essentially, through the system, you know, here's this, you know, and I'm looking around, and then I've got my receipt, so I'll, I'll, I'll put my receipt down, and then I'll code it to our office supplies for administration. And from there, it would then go to Nate, and Nate is responsible for approving that then at that point. And then, for something like that, it would go back to Karen. It would have had both my signing off on it, the receipt, it's been to Nate, it goes back to Karen, and then Karen will ultimately cut the check to pay that.
I have one follow-up question.
Yeah, so in, in the process, and, you know, we're talking, because we've had the experience through the school board. If there was questions that were brought up, I, and, and Counselor Lehman mentioned that the school board didn't know what was going on with the process. So I would like to, to suggest or mention that somehow, if there was some question, that it does somehow get back to the city council, so we can have a, an idea of what's going on on that. And, and I would open it up to, you know, any one of the, the staff members, and, and I think we should listen to that, and then attack that issue as, as it would ever come up, if it would ever come up.
Right.
But that's the missing thing, I think you're looking for, and I, I think.
Well, you know, like I said, Jay was earlier, was here we've got our, our citizens bummed out at what's happened in another government entity, and questioning, questioning the processes there, and making it pretty clear that the elected body is ultimately held responsible for it. And if I'm gonna be ultimately held responsible for it, I want to make sure it's being done right, okay? So how do we reassure ourselves and our citizens that we're confident that it's being done right? That the system in place is multiple eyes, multiple people touching, you know, and, and we saw that tonight, so, so that's good. But I would still just point out that most of the purchase issues at the school board, at the school district, were them very small ones that just added up.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's kind of where my focus is, because the big stuff really goes through council or school board and, and things like that, and bidding processes and RFPs and stuff. But, but I think you're absolutely right, and I agree with you, so.
Counselor Lewis, or Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, my question is, when you have to show a receipt, how mu, what kind of time period are you allowed? Things came up at the school board that, I mean, there were times where a certain person up there would go six, eight, nine months before they'd turn in their paperwork. I mean, do we have a 30-day period, or?
It's, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, yeah, it's, it's about that 30-day, that window. So we're giving the invoice statement, the P-card statement comes through. We then send it out, and we have, you know, it's usually not even that long a timeframe, but by the time you make a purchase, to when you have to turn that receipt back into the finance department, it's about a 30-day window or so.
Okay, say they don't, say they lost their receipt for some reason. Some, some are using, they can't come up with a receipt. At what point in time do we?
So, yep, absolutely. That, and that, and that happens. We do have receipts that people lose, or they misplaced, or, or whatever on that end of it. And we actually have a form, there's an affidavit that we have employees sign that says, you know, I lost this receipt, this is the purpose of the purchases, and this is the date that it happened and whatnot, and that'll get attached then to the statement as well. Um, excuse me, as this, to the statement as well, so.
And that has to be taken care of within the 30 days?
Oh, absolutely, because we have to process, so we processed the payment goes through, and that's fine, but we still have to process the payment out and distribute the expenditures to the appropriate departments and such. And so, we don't want to fall behind on that process, and so we do that once a month on that end of it. So it's, it's taken care of on a timely basis.
And that's what I would hope. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
And I think there are two other controls that I think aren't directly related, but, but, but kind of go to this as well. One is that we, we provide all of, all of the things that we're spending money on every, every month. And, and if there are any questions, you know, I want to be able to resolve that. We can, as you can see, I can pull up the receipt, you know, we can take a, I can tell you exactly what it's for, and, and, and hopefully, we'll handle it that way. The other thing is, is, is that we now, once a month, you know, this is a bigger picture item, but I think it's also very important. Once a month, we bring our finances to this body. From my understanding, I don't believe either one of those things happened with the school district. And we, and we bring them in a, in a way that tries to make them easily understandable with our arrows. Green arrow is good, yellow arrow is okay, red arrow, well, probably somebody's gonna ask us about it, and that's, and that's, and that's why we put it on there specifically. Because we want to have a comfort level that you know what's going on, just as much as you want to have that comfort level. Because if, if we're missing something, or if there's some questions that we don't pick up on, that you look at and say, well, what is this? Or, or a lot of times, as, as Counselor Lehman will do, you know, he knows the answer to the issue, but he wants to be able to make sure that the public knows about it, and so he'll ask and we'll explain, and then, you know, everything's out, out so people understand. So, you know, in, in all the places I've been, this is the tightest process and system I've, I've had. And I, I think Darren, that, that, that's from your perspective as well. Again, our process is the policy, and, and we've really tried to take it out as much of the human factor, if you will, out.
Nate?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I think, based on my understanding of the situation, you're looking for some level of comfort. And one of the really big distinctions between here, and what I understand it was like at the school district, is that Bill has, on multiple occasions, very straightforward to all of us, as the leadership of the city said, if you see something, say something. Tell somebody if there's a problem. And if it's me, or him, or Darren, or whoever, we have a real culture of, if you see something wrong, you need to say something to somebody. And I don't think that that culture is the same as, as it was at the school district, so if you, if that helps.
Thank you. Counselor Moco?
You did not touch on what the policy is if somebody purchases something personal on their card, whether by accident or? What is the policy for that?
If that happens, and when that happens, they're responsible for paying back the city.
And what kind of process does that go through then, Darren?
Uh, it would go through, we, we would go through a, a finger slapping on that end of it, is that don't happen. And it happens, and occasionally, something like that'll happen, mistakes happen. We'd request reimbursement immediately, or as soon as possible on that item, before that statement can be paid. And then with the reassurance that it doesn't happen again, and if it does happen again, we can pull the card back from anybody at that point. The cards are a privilege, it's not a, it's not a right or anything to that nature. So, we try to teach and, and make it a learning experience, but, you know, obviously mistakes happen and such like that. But obviously, request payment or repayment back as soon as possible.
We just tightened that policy up over there.
Yeah, and I thought that policy did not allow personal use.
Right.
But I, I understand it does have.
Right, absolutely, doesn't, that's, that's the, the goal of the policy, but mistakes do happen.
Counselor Lehman?
The, every month, we, we do look at the bill list, but we don't see the actual P-card charges in the bill list.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, I believe you see, the payments are to corporate payment systems, and so you see, not necessarily all the detail, and we're, so we don't have, the way our system's built, we don't have the, we can't institute who the payment was to, unless it's actually typed in by the, the individual. So we're working on some processes that are to kind of clean some of that up and put some more detail into that system, but that's, it's a learning curve on, on that end of it. So that explanation that you saw Andy type into, where he put in the, it was a sand project or whatever, that's where you'd have to have the employee put in the, the vendor who it was from. Most of the time, they'll put in an explanation of what it was for, what the item was for, not necessarily the, the vendor, so.
There, there was a time that we did see the actual statements, and the, the credit card number was blacked out. I don't know, Jay did you say, will you hear that?
I think I remember that, yeah.
Where it would come with all the monthly billing, and it would be just like a credit card statement, like you'd get for your home credit card statement. The number of the account was blacked out, and it would show, you know, like, like recreations, a lot of party stuff. You know, food and balloons and these types of things that they're using for events at the community center and stuff like that. And, and it, it just showed that level of detail.
Right.
We always ask about it, maybe that's why they don't do it.
Well, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying, we, that did happen at one time.
How long ago was that? Do you remember?
Well, it had to be within the last eight, seven, eight years?
Yeah, at least.
And I think that that's a, a, you know, a piece of efficiency probably on, on the, on our side, is that, you know, with this tungsten system, we can now kind of put some reassurances. I mean, it's tough to have reassurances in today's day and age with what's been going on, but there's a reassurance there that it's been touched a handful of times. And for, you know, something to happen, there has to be coercion, basically, and that's, it's taking one or, that's taking two or more people to do that. And to, to make that step, that's a pretty big leap. And so, I think having this system in place, having those multiple touches, having the required documentation having to be there, kind of gives you that, hopefully, a, a little bit of security, or, or knowing that the control features are set up the way they're supposed to be done. If somebody wants to commit fraud, they can always commit fraud. It doesn't matter who or when, they can commit fraud. It's that, that's an inherent risk of our, our controls, is that you're always gonna have that possibility that something may be missed due to somebody knowingly and willingly trying to cheat the system. Well, you, you try to, to circumvent that as much as you can by having controls in place.
And an occasional receipt will go through the washing machine, I can attest to that.
You can get copies most of the times.
Counselor Lewis?
I'm gonna ask a question, I'm, I know the answer to, but I want the public to be reassured. Alcohol is not allowed on any of the P-cards, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Thompson?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, to follow up a little bit more, Councilmember Lehman's question, uh, follow-up, I think, is, is, as elected officials, you obviously owe fiduciary duty to the public, and spending public money is about the highest fiduciary level you get. But, and so if something goes wrong, the elected officials might get held accountable. But your fiduciary duty really goes to making sure the proper systems are in place to minimize as much as possible any risk of, you know, improper spending by city officials. I, I don't think most members of the public wouldn't expect councilmembers to be reviewing every invoice and checking every receipt. That's what you have staff for, so the important thing you have to keep in mind is to make sure that you're comfortable, that the policies and procedures that the city administrator and the staff put in place, you're comfortable with, you believe do have adequate controls, and the reason for the video is to show you how that actually operates. So, but if you have any questions about that, you certainly should ask them and get assurances from the city. That's why we have an independent audit every year too, so an outside auditor is looking at. So, that's your duty, is to make sure proper processes are in place to reduce as much as possible any improper expenditure of public funds.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, just to go off what Mr. Thompson had to say, I did look up the state statute. Any citizen that wants to look it up, it's 520.01 to 520.13, covers all the fiduciary responsibility of councilmembers.
Mayor, my, my, my biggest concern, as I stated, is the, is the PL one level. And now we just saw in the news, the city of Burnsville, some city staff person had a P-card and got caught using it wrong or something too, so. It seems to be at that lowest level where we have the lowest oversight. So, if that seems to be the trend, that seems to be where we should be focused on misuse. And our, our system and our procedures and our policies and stuff should be, you know, maybe instead of just two listed, there should be three or something. That's my, my comments, my concerns, so.
Good. Counselor Lewis?
I'm just curious on how much, you know, going off Counselor Lehman's question there, how much work would it be for staff to put those lower-level items in a re, in a printout for us that we can look at over and at least assure the public that nothing's going on?
Are you talking P-card purchases only, or are you talking?
Yes, yeah, just, just the lower level, like you said, the PL one level, because that's where, if anything can happen, that would be where it would happen. Anything above that, you know, we're talking pretty tough to, you know, you're pushing the limits there.
Yeah, I can, I can take a look and see what we can.
Just give us an idea of what we can do.
I can't guarantee what, what we can come up with at this point, but.
And, 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 you know, we'll, we'll take a look and see what that is, but I, 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 I hope, I hope that you have some comfort that even with those small P-one, you, you have three different set of eyes that are on it, and at three different levels, and at least two different departments. So, that's a pretty, that's a pretty high, you know, if, if there's some fraud there, there really gonna have to be some collusion and, and.
This one says two levels, but I think we're missing the.
Well, you, you have, it starts in the finance department, and then it goes through the individual department, and, you know, then it would come back to the finance department, so, I mean, you got multiple eyes and multiple departments.
Counselor Lewis?
No, I, we're, we're doing this whole exercise for the public. You know, they're, they're the ones that are asking the questions, or of us, and we're supposed to pass them along. And I'm just trying to reassure the public that everything's being done, that can possibly be done. So, and I, I trust staff, I don't see any problem there. But in the other part of the city that had the problem, I'm sure a lot of people were trusted there too, so.
But I'm not sure they have this style of process, so, and that's where they may now. And that's where, they may now. So, but absolutely, I think this was a great exercise, and thanks staff for bringing this forward, and especially you walking us through it like that.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more item here. Looking at the, if you look at the bill list for tonight, that bogus item does show up on the bill list as well, that was in the video, but our P card payment is also on there, so that payment is made to corporate payment systems.
Corporate payment center, right.
Yeah, so that, so that detail, although it doesn't have the vendor name, it doesn't have the place where the purchase was made for a majority of them, but that is individual line item is on that one.
The department and brief description.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, just maybe one follow-up on that. I mean, I remember the days too, when you saw the, each individual one, but keep in mind, just seeing it doesn't help you much. If it's a twenty-dollar purchase that came from office supplies, it doesn't give you, unless you're gonna dig even deeper than that and ask for the actual receipt, and actually add a, I mean, I guess I would urge a little caution about adding a council layer of approval on low-level purchases. It's certainly a council prerogative, and you can do it, but you really, the information you get oftentimes isn't any more helpful to you than just seeing the actual corporate credit card statement itself. But that's a council decision.
Counselor Lehman?
It's really hard to question a purchase you don't know that's ever been made. Okay? I mean, seriously, how can you question something you know nothing about? But I understand exactly what you're saying, and I totally agree with what Mr. Reynolds and staff are trying to do with the process. You know, there is a balance to be had here, and I have no issues with PL two and up. I think that the society is showing us that most of the problems are at the PL one level. And how do we make sure that that part of our process is tweaked, tightened it up a little bit? You know, that's best left to you guys to think about, and how it works best for your systems and stuff. But that's really where, to me, our focus should be on.
Counselor...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I want to thank the staff for putting this together for us and for the public, and I do think we have a lot of levels of protection here, and I think even at that PL one, we have more than the school district had, so I appreciate that. And I just think we keep looking at this, you know, in the next few months, and looking at that policy, and if there are ways that we can look at it and tweak it a little bit, I think that then we do that at that time, but I'm comfortable with where we're at on this process, and again, thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to say too, I'm comfortable with staff, I do, you know, I think they're doing a great job. I'm just trying to make the citizens more comfortable. They're the ones that are...
Absolutely. Counselor Mokel?
I also want to thank staff for their work, but I think we also need to realize that we, it's also our fiduciary responsibility to drill the auditors when they're here too, not just staff. They're the ones that have to look for those problems, and that's what we pay them for. So that's, would be my recommendation.
I value the discussion and the presentation, I think it's very important, and thank you for that. Moving ahead, matter of fact, ten A, city bill list for our preview here, and those corporate transactions are on there, is slightly less detailed, but it does tell you the department and a brief description. Outside of that, liaison administrative report, Councilmember Lehman?
Did not have one since the last meeting.
All right. Since our last meeting, I did meet with city staff and county officials, so that, we're gonna have some school crossing signs put up off of Seventeenth Avenue, so that's good news there, small stuff. More to come on that. Counselor White?
Nothing to report.
I did not have anything either.
I have to give you guys more homework. Administration report.
The only thing I had, Mr. Mayor, was the day after our last meeting, I was putting on my policy Wonk hat as I was with the municipal legislative commission's fiscal disparities work group, which is pure excitement, and really looking forward to continuing to work with that group and seeing if we can't find a way to make fiscal disparities a little more even and a little more balanced for those of us that actually pay as opposed to get.
How much should we pay Minneapolis and St. Paul this year?
What do we throw out there, Darren? A hundred, one point two million, something to that?
I'm not sure what the net dollar is, yeah.
Didn't mean to catch you off guard, but it's a lot.
So, but, you know, but think about that. That's one point two million dollars that we would have for our taxpayers as opposed to other communities.
However, you've got to look at the opposite direction too. That's one point five million they don't have, and how hard are they willing to fight to keep it?
Well, and that's exactly right, and, you know, obviously, this is, the reality is, we can tweak around the edges right now, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds. But I will say that the givers and takers, if you will, are changing. So Minneapolis is now a giver.
Really?
And when it first was put in play, there were five takers for every giver.
Right.
Now there's one point three for every giver. So ultimately, the political solution is, is when you have more givers than takers, I think that's when you'll see some movement. But until that point, we can, we can kind of set the stage and at least work around the margins a bit.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I just think it's a good idea to just try and trip away at it. You know, we can get a hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there, it all adds up. I mean, eventually, the table, you know, the scale may go the other way.
Well, I've looked at this issue for a long time, and I feel, you know, as a, as a community, you want to build a well-balanced community that's effective and efficient, and people want to live there. Diversity of jobs and industry is the key. We've built a pretty good community here, that's continuing to grow, that's well-balanced, versus a community that only has one major employer, and then that employer has some difficulties, and then they, they become a taker, right? They, they, they get the funds. I think that I'd like to have it where we control the destiny of our own community, and we're not penalized for building a well-balanced community, and that, I always feel penalized. Shrocky does pretty well, and I really owe it to the diversity of our industries that have done that. But then, we've done so well that, you know, a little helping hand, and Christmas was just here, I didn't see any thank you notes from those communities, and there are a few less, but keep at it anyway. Well, thank you for that. Nothing else before this, Counsel?
Counselor White? I'll make a motion to adjourn to January sixteenth, twenty eighteen, at seven PM.
I have a motion. And a second by Counselor Lewis. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, we are adjourned at eight fourteen. Thank you all very much.